Good evening, everyone. It is officially 6:00 PM on Monday, January 27th, and I'd like to call the order, the regular school board meeting of Independent School District Number 882. Before we get started, I'd like to officially welcome Mary Bartel to our school board. Last meeting, we had a very busy organizational meeting, so I apologize for not officially welcoming you, but we are excited to have you for this next term. So, welcome. Everyone, if you could please see and help me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, and now we're looking for approval of the tentative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes 6-0. We have no citizen comments tonight. We'll move around to item number five, fiscal stability, looking for approval of our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes 6-0. Now on to item number six, collaborative connections. We will have a resolution for acceptance of gifts. Superintendent Olson will go through the gifts that we're receiving.
All right, we are bringing forward two very nice gifts from our community. The first one from the Monticello Lions Club for $500. That's going to our Monty Python's Robotics Team, who just got their season kicked off here recently for robot parts and the regional tournament. And then also going towards our high school, specifically for career technical education. The Northwest Area J.C.s have donated $5,000. So, once again, we have a great partnership across our community, and it sure is cool to see the support that they give our students and programs.
Effort be resolved by Monticello School Board Number 882 to gratefully accept the following donations. Monticello Lions Club, $500 for the Monty Python Robotics Team. The Northwest Area J.C.s, $5,000 for equipment for C.T.E. at MHS.
Second.
Right, it was moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes 6-0. We are now on to item B, Middle School Unified Art Club Approval, which will be gone over with Superintendent Eric Olson.
All right, so first, just a little overall review of the last board meeting when we met. We had two clubs that came forward, and one of them, after listening, it clearly felt like it was a community education club. And so, we spent time with Mr. Revnik and Mr. Mack, and we have started to look at the structure of our 6 through 12 programming, and we'll be ready for a full restructure and be able to share that with you coming up here in March. So, we are, right now, just bringing forward the one club that was presented by Ms. Morrow and Ms. Frick. And this one, we still feel like fits at the Monticello Middle School because of the academic nature and then the continuation of service. So if we remember, the target audience of this Unified Art Club is helping students both in general education and students in special education, and helping them through collaboration and building relationships using art as the medium. The class will have a one-to-one or one-to-two general education to special education ratio for students, but it's really just to promote an inclusive environment and be able to give kids the opportunity to recognize the strengths of all our kids. So it's exciting. We do have Ms. Morrow here for any last questions that might come up, but we're excited to run this cost-neutral program. And like I said, the reason why we... This is one that is a club that will be here, but most of them that you'll see moving forward will all go through community ed of their clubs. But this one, just with the academic nature and the special education component, we feel like it's a good one to start here at the middle school and then have a continuum of service up to the high school.
Any discussion from the board? We were presented this before and given opportunity to speak. I think it's fantastic personally. Anybody else have anything?
We already have other unified programs, so it falls in line with it as well. I think it's good.
Definitely edifies what we're already doing. All right, this is an action item.
Unified Art Club.
Second.
Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Mark Branson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes 6-0. Now we're on to item number C, which is our High School Washington DC trip request. I'd like to welcome to the podium Mr. Guyan, Mr. Talecki, and Ms. Lightner, who are our high school social studies teachers.
You're like cheering. Sorry, in my head I was.
E grades 10 through 12. And we're gonna go through a little overview of the trip, what it all includes, the dates, cost. And if you have questions, please listen with you. So things that we'll cover, just our details, a little bit about ourselves, who we're partnering, partnering with, safety support, what's all included as well. So, I'm Craig Guyan. I've been teaching here since 2009. Teach economics. This will be our fifth travel experience to Washington DC. And one of the things I think we're all most excited about is for our students to experience DC, history and all it has to offer.
Yep. So Katie Lightner, I've been teaching in the district since 2004. I think this is my fourth trip. I think, yeah, right, five total. And exactly what he said, bring history to life. Bring our subject matter to life.
Jason, Talecki, I've been teaching here since... A little bit more quiet. I teach CIS, American history, and some regular American history too. So, this is an amazing opportunity, really. Up in my class all the time. We talk about, just talking about it last week, you know, it's like, hey, we were standing in Lee's house in his backyard. You can see, you know, DC right across the river. I was at the, you know, Army of the South in Northern Virginia, in his backyard, in DC. Kids are like, oh yeah, I remember that. Saw that, or I should have paid attention a little bit more. Either way, good experience and just be able to relate that. So it's awesome. So thank you for having us here. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us, because this is very important to us.
So just a quote here, "The great force of history comes from the fact that we carry it within us, all that we do controlled by it." History is literally present in all that we do. I think that's important with everything that we do, with what we teach and for this trip. So it's a four-day tour, and we'll get into this. Jason and Katie are gonna get into that, what each day entails. This is just a quick rundown of our first two days. Our goal is to leave as early as we can on that Monday, that first day. So we get out there, we have four whole days. We try to hit the ground running right away with everything that we do. This trip includes lunch. It includes dinner as well, as well as breakfast at the hotel every single day. It includes our airfare, our travel expenses when we're there for bussing, and all of our tour guides, all of our ticketing to all of our events as well. Same thing with the third and fourth day. Exact same thing. We try to get the last flight that we can out of DC, so our kids get the full four days. And when we're there, we walk, we go everywhere. We'd like to go in late April, which you'll see, part of the reason is weather. And we're outside a lot. We want good weather for our students, so they're not freezing. And running around, we try to go after cherry blossoms, because it's a little quieter as well for our students, and that just seems to be a better atmosphere for our trip.
Okay, and so like Craig said, we hit the ground running, and this is the only time you really see high schoolers exhausted. I mean, we go in the morning and we go till at night. And so when we do, like, room checks, usually they're like, we'll be like, we'll come around in a half an hour, and they're like, can we have an early room check? Like, they're tired. So the first day, we like to go to the National Mall, and so they have options. So you have, right, American history. You have aeronautical space engineering, and you have just many choices to get 'em, to just see and explore, and kind of they're in awe of all the different opportunities. So we do that. We do spy museum, looking... That was the first time we did that last year, and the kids really liked it, looking at all, like, the espionage and spies dating way back, starting in the Cold War era. And then the first night, we do tour of monuments. So in this case, we go, well, here's the mall. So here's all of us at the mall the first day. There's a new Futures exhibit, so if you look right there, that's what they say the Ubers are gonna look like. It lands on buildings and comes up. So that was in the new Futures. The kids thought that was really cool. And the first night then, we do night tours. So we start at MLK. We walk down to Jefferson, right there on the water. We do Abraham Lincoln. And then right by the Lincoln Memorial is also the Vietnam Wall. And we do that at night, and that is really impactful at night. So we have the Abe Lincoln Memorial. And then if you look, the kids at the mall, we found Roland was his last name, and he was a Vietnam vet from Monticello that had passed away. And so we always bring the kids to his name every year to kind of bring it home. There's also two mistakes at the Lincoln Memorial on the wall in the writing of the marble. And so we talk about that and let them look for that and kind of walk them through. We also do the Korean Memorial at night. And World War II. Last year, at World War II, they were so tired, they asked if we could do World War II the next morning. But we usually try to do it at night because it's absolutely beautiful. And every... And this year, when we were at World War II, it was especially amazing because there was a peace flight, an honor flight there, and from Alaska. So veterans from all wars were there, and so they were so open. And so the kids sat down and talked to them while we were there. So that was a special treat to have an honor flight there while we were there. And then day two, Arlington National Cemetery. We leave bright and early. We drive to Arlington. This one comes up in class all the time. Like Mr. Talecki said, we just got done with Civil War, and like, my first question was, do we know how Arlington National Cemetery started? And a student in the back was like, yeah, I was around the house. It started around the house, right? And he, right, Robert E. Lee's house. So for them to see the monuments and experience it before we even talk about it just brings it home. Then we go Mount Vernon, right? George Washington's, or George Washington's home place. And they find out that a lot of things they thought about George Washington is usually myth, like the teeth and what have you. Old Town Alexandria. We go, we usually eat supper in Old Town Alexandria. You see the tiniest house. It gets six feet wide. And we just walk around and take in the history. And usually, we do like a night tour there. And then, one that we always make sure we do at night, and it's one of the most impactful, is the 9/11 memorial at the Pentagon. It's little fountains and benches, and it's, at night is especially impactful with the light. And one thing is nice is that since we all go and we've all been there so many times, we can really, like, especially at something like the 9/11 memorial, you don't want to stand and like yell this out. And so we each kind of take small groups of kids and walk 'em through and explain this stuff. So it's not, we're not shouting to big groups of people. We each kind of... And Arlington National Cemetery is the same. We're taking groups of kids to, you know, there's major generals and political figures, and every kid has different interests. And so we kind of break off within our interest group. And also, at Arlington National Cemetery, we always go to the changing of the guard and the Tomb of the Unknown, which is all that right there. And there's Robert E. Lee's house. They started burying the Civil War dead around his house to show him what a traitor he was. And then that is where, right, the cemetery would eventually come from. There you go.
All right, I get to take over now too. One of the things that's really cool is the amount of symbolism that's obviously embedded into a lot of these different monuments and memorials. And when we talk about 9/11, obviously it's pretty solemn, and in these moments, you know, they're quiet. We're just kind of walking around and reflecting. You know, a bench facing a certain direction tells you whether that person was on the plane or if it's facing the opposite direction, that person was inside of the building, you know? And the height of the wall around it starts, small part of the wall is the youngest person. And then it works its way up, and it just goes down and around. So it has the years that they were born. All the way around, and it goes all the way around. And, you know, in that situation, we always have, we always have our tour guys for the bus, but in that situation, you know, like Katie was saying, we get into pretty small groups. And it's just nice to be able to walk around and be able to take that stuff in and to be able to have opportunities to take, you know, was it four years ago? A young man, and he wanted to see where some Navy SEALs were buried in Arlington National Cemetery. They were a deal for him. And he went to the registry and he looked where they were, and they were nowhere near where our tour was. So I was like, hey, if you guys are all right, I'll take him and we'll go. So we had the opportunity then to go down. And it's an active, you know, military site. It's an active cemetery. So there's murals going on. Kind of explain to him as we go, the case on's going down. And I'm like, yeah, you know, like, there's a few right now, and you really can see. And, you know, it's very... It's not postcards, it's not a picture. It's not always just a tour. Sometimes it's the things that we get to do along with that as well. Of course, near and dear to my heart, we have the Marine Corps Memorial. We get to stop at every year to see the flag raised atop Sarabaiachi. Took place in World War II. Admiral Chester Nimitz said, "Uncommon valor was a common virtue that most middle bomber were awarded in battle." The United States Marine Corps took place on here. Pretty cool place there. Every single battle at the Marine Corps participated in the history of the Marine Corps since November 10, 1775, is listed all the way around. You can just kind of see the gold print on there. So we get a good photo there. This is Mount Vernon here, looking out at the Potomac, right? Overhead view there. I always try to get some group pictures in these cool situations here, bringing different people in. And you can see Mount Vernon there. Just, it's very interesting just to hear the overall history, even of the buildings that, you know, the building is meant to look like it was more expensive. It truly was. Because Washington didn't have, you know, they were successful, but they weren't as successful as some of the upper-level planters there in that time. Really hard for me, I don't think we have laser pointer on here, but a picture on the top left up there, middle, is one of our former students, Sebastian Gardner. He's FBI agent, and he lives in Alexandria, or a little bit on the outskirts because you gotta have awful lot of money to live in Old Town Alexandria. Super expensive. But he's come the last two times and met up with our kids. Last year unfortunately was really, really quick just because we were on such a tight time schedule. But this time, he had, you know, probably a couple hours to spend with us. He works in government fraud and investigates government fraud within the FBI right now. He's a member of their SWAT team as well. And he was a ball captain here. Just a great all-around kid, and he talked to our kids for probably about a half hour that year, answered all kinds of questions, you know? Get to meet a real-life FBI agent. And down there is the 9/11 memorial that we just talked about. Old Town, Virginia. Done the night tour. It's kind of a ghost tour. You don't necessarily believe in ghosts. It's a little bit different. But at least you could walk around there with a group of guys. Last year, we played a game called, "How expensive do you think that little house is?"
Oh, yeah.
So I was just Googling it because they weren't really into the ghost thing. And some kids are, some kids aren't. That's just the way it goes. So we just had our own little tour, and I'd be like, how much do you think that is? $400,000, $500,000.
$2.8 million, yeah.
$2.8 million. It's got one bathroom and six feet.
Yeah.
It's pretty, it was pretty crazy that they found that pretty interesting. So it is a, it's a cool venue. Go walk around. Go to the White House. We get to, it's Lafayette Square, right? Lafayette Park.
Lafayette Park.
And then we go right outside there. You stand outside the gate. One of the rules outside of the White House is, if you're gonna protest there, the moment you leave, you're basically out. And so what's the oldest protest there? Is something about nuclear weapons.
Yes, it's taken on... So there's one tent left, and they man it all the time. It's now, it's like a monument, kind of. And so it's taken on. There's just signs everywhere, and the kids... So we talked to them about how nobody can... They always have to have someone in the tent because as soon as someone leaves a tent, it's gone. And it's been there since like 1970-something. And so the kids always get a kick out of that, and now, you know, all the... And then there's always, right? Because it's real world. So there's always people just standing around taking pictures and tourists, and there's always protesting, and there's always people, like, you know, with signs. And it's just, and you tell the kids to just take it in. We don't engage, you know? And because one of the things that was going on there, it was a huge Supreme Court case when we were there too. So world media all over. And so just for the kids to see, to just see all these different people and all this different stuff. And our, I'm just gonna brag because our kids always get compliments. They do. And a lot of schools bring middle schoolers out there, and, no thank you. And our kids always are just top-notch. And like Jason said, they just rise to the occasion. You know, they know when it's time, right, to joke about stuff, and then they just know when it's real. And so they just, we just always get compliments on our kids out there.
And just the questions they ask, you know, amazing. I don't, sometimes I don't even think about it. We were walking around Arlington National Cemetery. Like, well, why is this one like this? Why is that one like that? I don't know. Maybe it was a high-ranking person. We looked at it, and like, really, it's not a high-ranking person. I don't know. I'm like, that's a good question. Let's try to figure that out. We'll do some research. And it turns out, it didn't have to be that high-ranking. If you had money, you could build yourself a pretty big. And then they standardized it after that. So for a while, because it was kind of arbitrary how it was going together before it became a national cemetery. So, yeah, it's just, we always, I always learn something every time I'm out there. And I feel like they're learning too. So it's pretty cool. We go to Capitol Hill. Here we go inside on a tour. You know, we get to go around inside, the rotunda area, you know, kind of tour around in there. They'll have a little presentation that takes place. You know, it's a pretty slick organization how they have it all set up. You put the little earbuds in, and you're listening to your tour guide, and there's about 400 other tours, you know, going all at the same time. But you get to, you know, get to experience it a little bit. Head over to the Library of Congress. These two got Library of Congress cards last time. So while we're standing up in the balcony behind the Plexigas looking in, those two are walking around on the floor.
So we went down, and we're waving to the kids, and they're like...
How did they get down there?
Yeah, it was pretty cool.
Yeah.
For the rest of the trip, we'd be like, flashing our Library of Congress cards.
After that, we head back over to the National Mall again. There's so much to see around the mall, you know? Last time we went, we had an awesome experience because, you know, one of our students, grade aunt, is a curator at...
The American history.
And so she's like, yeah, I'm free for like 45 minutes. I'll take you around. And we had maybe a handful of kids that were following with us at that time. And she was like, yeah, this is why this is here, and this is here, and all this. And she's like, that Barbie, that was actually mine. They were putting this together and they were looking for a Barbie. And that's my, that's my parents right there at their cabin. Like they just had so many cool connections, uh, that she had put together. And to be able to ask them like, why do you, why do you choose these exhibits? Why is that there? You know, with the, uh, who's the chef? Julia Childs.
Julia Childs.
Like, why Julia Childs? You know, they talk about all that goes into putting it all together and how it's become one of the most popular ones. And it, you know, it's supposed to be done months or years ago and rotated out, but you'll just want to keep seeing it. So, um, give them a chance to go back, look again, uh, and see what they might have missed. Every once in a while, some things are closed too. Some days, uh, certain places aren't open. So it gives them a chance to see that.
And you could spend weeks in one museum and not see everything. So to give them like options to go to see a couple of things at a couple of different museums.
And when we do that, you know, they're pretty much so on their own. Obviously stay with a friend or stay with a group, but go see what you want to see. You'll see, you know, we're gonna meet back here in two hours or three hours, whatever it, it might be. And some of them will want to tag along with us and some will want to go with their friends and go see that. And some of them, we just run into each other and end up going to see things together. Uh, we go to the Holocaust Museum. We go as a group, uh, for that. Again, incredible, incredibly powerful experience. You know, it's just like, really no way to describe it other than say it's just a moving experience. I've gone through there now, what, three, three or four times with kids. And, I mean, you barely hear a word. Like it's just quiet. You read and you walk and you see and you hear. Um, so it's, it's really powerful. Uh, there's our picture out in front of the White House. Every once in a while, it's kind of weird, but you'll see people doing construction on top of the White House.
No, we had a student that was like, oh gosh, they must be doing a lot of roofing. And we're like, those are Secret Service like snipers. Like those are not roofers. They are not roofers. So, yeah.
Just keeping an eye on you.
You know, sometimes you're like, okay, like we gotta get out to the real world here. Yeah.
Uh, this is inside the rotunda and then this is on the steps outside of Capitol Hill. I think that's Jefferson on the left.
Mm-hmm.
And right.
And right.
And right. Outside of it, the day. Forget going there in the day. MLK Memorial. And, uh, is that on the steps of the Lincoln?
On the Lincoln, yep.
So that's where he gave the I Have a Dream speech. That's where he stood. Uh, this is part of the Holocaust Museum. Uh, means work makes free, uh, in German.
And then one thing I learned that I didn't realize until this time, that the path you walk through the museum, those bricks were actually taken from, um, from the Warsaw Polish ghetto. So you're literally walking a path at, yeah, so that, like, that's what I learned that time. I had no idea. And then you just, yeah, that was, that was powerful.
Am I doing day four too? Okay. Uh, day four, Ford's Theater. Uh, again, that's a pretty cool experience too. You go in there, you sit down and you're gonna listen to, you know, they have pretty good narrators that go up there and tell the story about what happened to Abraham Lincoln and, and how it all kind of transpired and, and who John Wilkes Booth, uh, was and then what happens after that. Um, you know, and just kind of how that all comes together. You get a chance to see, uh, where Lincoln was sitting and where Booth jumped, uh, from the balcony down to the stage. And again, we were walking out, this was a couple of years ago, and someone said, hey, can we go see where Booth had his horse? And he escaped through the alley. I was like, that's a thing? I didn't know that was a thing. Sure enough, there's a marker just off to the side. He's like, yeah, I just looked up DC obscure historical things. And it showed me, it was like a hundred yards away. I thought we'd go look at it. It was really cool, you know? This got a little description of this is where the horse was and he's about that way. And wow, that's kind of cool. Um, go back, see the Washington Monument, World War II Memorial. They're right there. Uh, obviously the memorials typically are a little bit cooler at night with the lighting and stuff like that. Um, and the water in there, it's also a benefit of going a little bit later in the year. Uh, they're worried if the water's gonna freeze, they won't have water in them. Um, and the water features are kind of cool with that. Uh, and then we end the day, uh, at Georgetown before we go back, uh, and get to the airport. So Georgetown, we give them an opportunity to kind of go around and explore, uh, and see it. We've gone to the university there. Um, we've walked around to see all the various different things.
There's some cupcake, Georgetown cupcakes that the kids saw at some show. So there's always a line at the Georgetown cupcakes. Um, yeah, they just, and just really, really cool downtown cobble streets and.
And, you know, as social studies teachers, we're always very aware of current events and things like that. So we said, hey, you know, we got a couple of hours and when we meet back, we're gonna meet back at that building. And, uh, you know, as we're, we're waiting to kind of meet up, you know, probably about ten, fifteen Secret Service vehicles come flying up.
The whole motorcade and Secret Service.
We told them to meet us at the Ukrainian Embassy.
And the Ukrainian Prime Minister was in town.
And they were coming.
Yes.
And so Secret Service was everywhere and, uh,
So our kids got pictures with them.
Yeah. Bless her heart, Mary Jo Jepson, retired, uh, history teacher was with us as an extra chaperone. She's like, I'm just gonna ask if they'll take a picture with me. And she went right up to the Secret Service, like, can I get a picture? Yeah, come on over.
Yeah, the other guy's like, I don't go.
Yeah, I know, it was, uh,
It's always an adventure.
It is. There's always things we're gonna see that we just don't know we're gonna see.
And like helicopters flying, like the heli, like Marine One, we tell them, right, like, right, if there's three, that is the president moving, you know, and, and the stuff like that, that's going out there.
Shell game.
All time. At all times, there's always something we're talking about.
Yep. Uh, there's a box at Ford's Theater where President Lincoln was assassinated. Uh, then we go across to the McLean House, right?
Peterson.
Peterson House, Peterson House. Uh, go across to the Peterson House and there's, uh, an exhibit there. You see the kind of the tiny bed that Lincoln was in where he actually passed. Uh, and then it's got a hole that's kind of been turned into a museum. The rest of it, you kind of go through spiral, spiral your way down. Obviously Washington Monument here, be kind of a cool thing. Last year I had never thought of, tour guide had us go up there and sit like with our butts on the ground and put our feet up on it and look straight up. It's an amazing optical illusion that's created. Uh, some kind of cool pictures too. So a bunch of kids are doing that.
All right. So here's our travel window. Uh, we're looking at April twentieth through the twenty-third. So it's a Monday through a Thursday. Um, for our school dates, like we said, try to get out there as early as we can on the twentieth and then get back as late as we can on the twenty-third. Uh, so that's our window that we're looking at for our travel. So it's a Monday through a Thursday. Uh, we're using Explore America EF is our travel partner. Uh, we've built up a pretty good relationship with them. This will be our third time using, uh, EF. They've always come in at the cheapest. Uh, if not, we usually go back to them and say, hey, here's a price you have to beat. And they've always done that. We try to be very cost efficient for our students, uh, because that's important and to get the most out of it as well.
And safety is a big thing. Um, and so, like, I'm kind of a psycho about safety. And so like for me, this trip is, we, we've, we've felt, uh, completely safe. One of the things that, like as a chaperone and as a mom, that I like is once we, we do, we do room checks, we tape the doors and then they provide security guard at every level, um, that sit, posted all night. And then in the morning, we get a list. So-and-so had to come out and buy Advil at the front desk. Do you know what I mean? Escorted them down, escorted them back in. And then it's like, no other, usually it's like, nothing, nobody, nobody moved, you know? But, uh, but to me, that's just really important. We've, we've, we, they take us to nice areas. We've always stayed in nice areas. When we go places, they know right where we're going and, 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 and just the security thing is, is a, a big deal. And then like the teacher chaperones, we've all, we all know and trust each other with the kids and, and so.
And, and the kids trust us too, right? Like they want to go with our social studies department and with us as teachers. And that's what we've always tried for, is try to get as many teacher chaperones as we can. So, uh, support, they have a great support system. Uh, we're in contact with them all the time. They have an office right in DC in case something would come up or something would go wrong, uh, which makes a big difference. Everything's included in this, full-time tour directors, buses, hotels, airfare. We won't know hotel or airfare till about a month, maybe ninety days out, you know, somewhere between a month to two months, maybe three months out. Uh, breakfast, lunch and dinner daily, overnight security. Um, you know, all that transportation when we're there, which is huge to get dropped off rate, you know, on the National Mall. We're not driving anywhere. We're there. Any gratuity is also included as well. So cost, uh, seventeen forty-nine for the four days. Uh, just to kind of put that into perspective, uh, three or two years ago, it was fourteen forty-nine. So it's an extra three hundred dollars, three hundred dollars this time around. They have monthly payment plans, bi-weekly payment plans as well. Uh, we don't do any fundraising. Uh, we've never done any fundraising. So it's, uh, up to the students. There are some scholarships that students can apply for through EF, uh, to possibly get some of that knocked down. One nice thing is it does say it's three hundred dollars more, but, um, that first week, whenever we roll this out, our goal is to hopefully get board approval tonight. Start to, uh, really promote this probably the next couple of weeks. And then we'll have a parent meeting. If they sign up within that first week, uh, they get a hundred dollars off. So it ends up being sixteen forty-nine. I know we've had some students that say, hey, we want to come back. Uh, they were able to give us a repeat traveler discount. So for those kids, it'd be an extra a hundred fifty dollars. So I think that's a pretty good deal for everything that's included, uh, in this trip. And we're very fortunate for that. Um, and that's our goal, start rolling it out now. We find that it's helpful, especially for payment plans, to help raise money for kids to get it out as soon as we can. Plus we lock in the best price possible. Uh, prices continue to rise. Uh, if we wait and wait and wait, we want to get it out in front of our kids as soon as we can. So, uh, without anything else, uh, questions that y'all have, we appreciate it, um, if there's questions.
Can you explain a little bit more about, you said that the students themselves do some fundraising?
No, uh, so like students, we, we say if you want to reach out to grandma, grandpa, aunt, uncle, they can do something like that. We don't do any together as a, as a school, as a Washington DC trip. They can try to ask people for some money or maybe it's a birthday, Christmas, whatever it might be that they can try getting.
Formal.
Yep.
Thank you for doing this. It's amazing and that they have this opportunity.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's, it's awesome. It really is fun.
Even like, um, if students have different needs or wanted to see something else, I appreciate that so much. That's so good for them. Like, oh, I wanted to see this. And then you make it happen and.
Yeah, well, when we have that first parent meeting, we'll talk about that. Like, obviously, you know, we're gonna be kind of doing some things, but there's something on your list. You want to see it. No, like again, you know, we've been there a few times, which is helpful because we know where things are located and how to get there. Um, so I'm a visiting partner for that scene before. That's special.
I will lead you to Ira Hayes's grave.
Yeah.
No, like I, we will, yeah.
And we even had one lady, young lady whose grandfather was buried out there. So we were able to go find where his grave was.
She had never been there.
That was really cool and powerful for her, some of her friends that came with her. So, really cool.
I, I second Melissa's comments. I just have two questions. Uh, the first one, are the kids providing transportation? They show up at the airport or they show up here and you guys are all leaving as one group?
At the high school.
At the high school.
At the high school and then we take us down.
Okay. And then my second question is, on the pricing, I'm sure it's at a minimum number of students that you need. Is there any concern that you would be at a minimum number?
Minimum number is forty to forty-five. Last year we had ninety-five.
Oh, okay.
So we always say we're going with forty or forty-five. Once we hit that cap, we close it, but then there's a waiting list.
Yep.
Uh, last year we were able to open it up. So we try to,
So we had two full coach buses while we were in DC.
Gotcha. Okay.
So how do you decide to hold it back up if we have another full?
Yeah, so he works.
Yep, yep. Try to get that full waitlist. Otherwise in the pricing, and like Casey was saying, can change. And we try to say, hey, this is the price we're giving you. That's where we're at right now. We don't want pricing to go up or anything like that. We're not trying to throw any surprises at people and say, oh, here's an extra fifty bucks at you or whatever it is.
Yeah. So once we got that second bus filled up, then we knew the price would be. So then we added, added that whole second bus.
Thank you for the presentation.
Appreciate that.
Oh, it was great. Loved the energy. Thank you for taking time out of your life to do this.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the opportunity.
And I like the different things that you're going to. Um, we were just there last March during the Vietnam War. My husband was assigned there for a year. And so we always end up going there every once in a while. And I have my Library of Congress card too, and that's my price.
This is, this is really a passion project.
It is.
It's just, you know, when you teach this stuff, I can imagine. Right? You'd want to be on a field trip. It's just there. If you teach this stuff and talk about it for most of your adult life, to be able to have the opportunity to go show it to them and walk in it and see it and be immersed in it, that's pretty awesome. Thank you.
I do have to tell you a kind of a funny story that's a credit to the board. We were walking by the Supreme Court and there was all these things and, and one man yells out and says, I bet they don't even have you say the pledge of allegiance in school anymore. He looks at him and goes, and I, because we say it every Monday. And I was like, yep, yep, we do. But I was like, yep, they were very, and he was like, oh, oh. Yeah, it's just.
Four hundred different worldwide media all camped along there. There's various protesters and, yeah.
Yep, for all different, every end of the spectrum, you know, it's just, there's just always something out there.
Well, it's definitely a powerful trip and I want to thank you guys for doing it because I know it takes a lot of time and energy. Um, not only the trip itself, but a lot of pre-planning to make it happen. And my son had the opportunity to go this last trip and it was incredible for him and the discussions we got to have when he got home, because I've been there multiple times, um, to just talk about what was most impactful to him, what he really enjoyed. And, um, I was just stating earlier, he wasn't feeling the best, but there was no way he was missing this trip and, um, his buddies were there and he was like, Mom, you won't believe, like, we run and we run and we run. Like, you get back and I'm out, like in the bed. So, um, just such a cool experience for them because a lot of people would never get that experience in their entire lifetime. So for you guys to be able to give that to them is just absolutely incredible. So thank you.
And then the, the cost, does that cover your cost on the chaperone part or how, how are you guys covered? That covers that, the seventeen forty-nine from all the students?
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion?
Well, and I, I don't know if you meant this Casey, but I thought the same thing. And, and I would say that's good. That's, that's how we would want it. You know, we're not going, what?
It's fine. I didn't, I didn't, yeah, no.
I think we can technically bring one chaperone for every ten kids.
Yeah, that's how we have it.
That's how we operate it.
Yeah. Tried to, tried to kind of stick to that. Last year was tough just because we had ninety-eight, ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
So I think we took eight.
And then the other chaperones, were those just other adults or were they just other teachers or what's the?
We tried to first, social studies is our top priority.
Yep.
Um, but then we have some coaches and stuff like that. So in the past, then we've tapped, tapped retired teachers. Um, so Mary Jo Jepson and, um, um,
Brad and Cory.
Brad and Cory Hansen both taught here. And so, um, retired teachers have been chaperones as well.
I don't think it'd be a concern trying to find extra chaperones.
No.
Yeah.
Casey sounds like he's volunteering.
I've been there. It's, it's really impactful. It's a, it's a good trip on there. My wife wants to go this summer. So.
Very cool. Anything else?
Glad you guys used the word passion too, um, because that's, uh, obviously you can see, feel that from you, uh, three. And then that's what exuberates out of our kids, which is, uh, the ultimate. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, board, this is an action item.
Second.
Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Mary Bartel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes six zero. Thank you again.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks for taking your time.
All right, next up on our agenda, number, item number seven, teaching and learning. Um, this past week was Paraprofessional Recognition Week. And so, um, the board sent out on their Friday newsletter, uh, a letter just, um, really praising our paraprofessionals, our educational support specialists in our district. And so, um, I think you wanted me to read it, right? And, okay, so I'll quick read that so you guys can all hear what went out to our educational support specialists. On behalf of the Monticello School Board, we'd like to take the opportunity to extend our deepest gratitude to you during Paraprofessional Recognition Week. Your dedication to students, staff and the families of our district does not go unnoticed. And this week is an opportunity to honor the impact you have on our schools and the Monticello community. Every day you step into our classrooms, hallways and support spaces with a commitment to foster growth, relationships, learning and the success of every student. Whether you assist in academics, support social and emotional needs or create an inclusive environment, you play a critical role in keeping students, helping students overcome challenges and achieve their goals. Your patience, care and resilience are invaluable to our schools and our community. You are members, you are mentors, problem solvers and champions for the children and families we serve. As a board, we are extremely grateful and want to celebrate you for the work you do to uphold the mission and values of the Monticello Public Schools. Thank you for your tireless service, compassion and commitment to excellence. We are proud to have you as an integral part of our district, respectfully, Monticello School Board. And, um, I just want to say, I think this kind of covers it all, but this is what our second largest employee group is our educational support staff. And, um, they make such an impact on our community, like not just the students that they're working with, but also the families in the community. And it's huge. So we just want to take this opportunity to say thank you. Does the board have anything else to say? All right. Now we'll move on to safe and healthy culture. And we would like to welcome up to the podium, our Director of Business Services, Ms. Tina Burkholder.
All right. Good evening, board. We have our, um, probably greatly anticipated financial forecast this evening. So I'll go over our timeline and then I'll go over our revised budget that I've been working on since, uh, December. Look at some budget assumptions and then look at a couple of forecast scenarios. So right now we are in January where I normally present a financial forecast. And right now, and even in previous months, we're doing some building visits, trying to get a handle on needs for the upcoming year, talking about where we're at financially and going through possible staffing changes. Um, and in this forecast, we are only looking at our general fund. This doesn't include the special ed cooperative activity that the state normally sees when they look at our general fund activity. But we keep that separate and the forecast is just focusing on our general fund. So the revenue, uh, budget for this year in the first revision, as I previously noted in September and November, that, uh, not all the students show up that we thought. We were down about a hundred and twenty kids. We had twenty-five less in kindergarten, fourteen less in grades one through five, forty-six less in six through eight and thirty-five in nine through twelve. So that had an impact in our budget revision. That had less levy that will come in because of that and will have less state aid, um, because of that as well. We did have some other state aid budget revisions. Our special ed cross subsidy went down a little bit. Uh, that's based on, the cross subsidy aid is based on prior year's expenses. So if you're a little high on the budget side, on the expenses where you're being more conservative, that kind of hits you in the bum if you're on your cross subsidy aid because then you're not getting forty percent of what you, of what you spent. So, it's kind of a balancing act, I guess, in how you figure out, uh, special ed costs and funding. And then, uh, on the state side as well, we had some new money come in. We had our one-time curriculum money with literacy, REDACT, and then we also had the REDACT Training MOU that's in this budget as well. But overall, um, that levy in state is, a lot of it is enrollment changes. On federal sources, we had a couple revisions in our federal aids, but not much on the title side. We did have our COPS grant that I thought initially would be mostly recognized last year. And half of that ended up happening last year and the rest is coming this year. And that is a joint grant between Becker, Big Lake, Monticello and the Co-op. And then for other, I did, uh, adjust our interest revenue. And then we also received a wellness credit with, uh, Medica when we changed provider. So that is in there as well. So overall, our revenue budget is going down about three hundred thousand. And this is what it looks like in the pie chart. Again, a lot of our revenue coming in is in the form of state aid. On the expense side, um, our salaries went down. We have about two point six FTEs in, uh, speech FTEs that we didn't fill and they're actually being contracted out. So we see a decrease in our salaries, but we'll see an increase in purchase services because they're being contracted out. Our benefits went up a little bit. Uh, a lot of that has to do with health insurance. People either changing plans or changing from single to family coverage. In purchase services, again, I mentioned the speech services. So that's about half of that. The other half are the additional transportation routes that were added this year. So that's mainly our two increases in purchase services. On supplies, we, um, had a little bit of overspending last year with technology. So we, we, um, had a little bit of overspending last year with technology, so I had to revise the budget down this year to make up for that. So, that is a large part of the decrease in it, but it's also being offset by that curriculum money coming in for the REACT. On capital, again, that's that COPS grant making up the majority of that with camera purchases between the three districts in that grant. So, overall, our expense budget is increasing a half a million dollars. And again, I chart on how we spend our money, and the largest source is salaries and benefits. Any question on the first look at the budget revision? Right. So, as we move into the forecast, um, the enrollment projections I do revise down a little bit because, if you remember in my enrollment projection presentation, sometimes we see a decrease in our enrollment throughout the year. So, we will, we won't see a hundred percent in all the kids if they're slowly moving out or moving away. Um, so I tend to revise down the estimates for revenue, um, depending on, um, what trends I've been seeing. So, the enrollment is down a little bit from what the actual bodies that show up on October first. In the revenue assumptions, so the two thousand twenty-five legislative session just started, and, um, we know from MDE, there was summer unemployment that was passed, uh, two sessions ago, or two, um, yeah, sessions ago, and we know that that funding will run out sometime mid FY twenty-six of next year. So, in my scenarios, I'm assuming, um, that it's a high priority for the legislators and the governor, and they will find ways to fund it for the next year and a half of the biennium. State special aid is under still the new law and, and with the same structure with the cooperative. The revised compensatory funds are under the new funding formula. Um, I gave you an update in the email that, uh, we did see a little bit of a drop in our compensatory for next year. This year, we get about two million. Next year, the new report says we'll get about one-point-seven million. So, it's a drop of three hundred thousand. That is another priority for the legislators and governor to extend the hold harmless that we saw this year into next year. So, hopefully, it can come together, and we'll see that three hundred thousand come back for next year. But still, it's unknown. And then we have our other grants, um, still in place. Some are five years, some are only a couple years, uh, which I have mentioned. Staffing, um, I typically guess that we'll have three retirements, so we'll see some savings within those three retirements in a year. Special ed staffing, we're still working with the special ed coordinators to see what the projections are for next year and what the staffing needs are, based on, uh, population that they're projecting. So, there's no adds in that regard in this forecast. We do have, um, some programs that we're looking to shift that were in the cooperative that are Monticello. Um, we might, um, recommend to move one of them to the Monticello side because a lot of the students in that program are from Monticello and are really from Becker Biglake. Uh, so it might make sense to move it, but it's, um, it'll, we just want to dive a little deeper on the revenue projections and what it means when we shipped, uh, programs. On the expense side, our salary and benefits will be based on parameters set by the board. Just as a reminder, our Medica health insurance cap for next year is thirteen percent. So, I'm assuming that we would get that cap of thirteen percent. Other things in the forecast could increase anywhere from zero to ten percent, depending on if it's just supplies, utilities, transportation, whatnot. We won't borrow short-term, uh, for cash flow, assuming we still get the ninety percent during the years and ten percent after the year that the state won't borrow against school districts, and that our total expenses will end up about point-five percent under budget. Our fund balance assumptions, we have a policy where we try to be within eight to sixteen percent. That's a gauge of one to two months of expenditures. We have a little bit left in our committed severance fund, where we spend it down based on the retirements that are happening. And there's not a lot, um, employees left that have that severance fund, and it's more, uh, budgeted on a year-to-year basis with the 403B matches. Our carryover assigned balances will be awarded at fifty percent after this year, and then next year we'll move away from carryover and, um, have a different, uh, supply budget allocation moving forward. Other forecast assumptions, we have our trusts that we'll look at. Uh, we have some contracts where we did add some more sunset language, where we could look at the levy versus the trust. I have a new actuarial study that do, um, as of employees that are here as of July one, twen- two thousand twenty-four. So, that's my next project to work on, so I can get that study, um, uh, for the board in the next coming, coming months. I think that's all the assumptions. Any questions on the assumptions before I dive into the All right. So, scenario one, we know with legislation that we will get at a minimum a two percent increase on our general education aid. Um, they're, they passed it in the two sessions ago, where it would increase based on inflation, based on the previous two quarters of CPI, but that won't come out probably till mid-February, but it wouldn't be above the cap of three percent. So, somewhere between two percent and three percent is where our general education aid increases could be. So, I just did scenario one, two percent. Scenario two, middle ground, two and a half percent, and scenario three at three percent. Most, everything else is kind of the same of where I'm trying to get to. I'm assuming that we'll get, like I said, additional funding for summer unemployment. Our operating referendum is approved for levy payable twenty-seven. That won't really affect us till year three after this year. Um, so I'm just really focusing on years one and two after this year, but I'm assuming for year three that that'll happen. Um, we have staffing adjustments based on enrollment projections, so we need to right-size. So, we'll have about five hundred thousand of staffing adjustments based on the declining enrollment that we're anticipating. After that, it'll be a budget alignment of two million for next year and two and a half million for twenty-six, twenty-seven, and that'll get us around, uh, just over eight percent for year one and eight-point-six in year two. So, basically, how I came up with those budget targets was what would get us to a, a balanced budget for year one, and that's just where that two million kind of got us there. We're, we're just overspending a little bit, about eighteen thousand, and we're landing at about eight and a half percent. And then again, the two-point-five million for twenty-six, twenty-seven gets us to about the same mark of eight-point-six-four percent. Scenario two, like I said, uh, having the general education aid increase at two and a half percent. Same with summer unemployment and the referendum being approved, the staffing adjustments that need to happen with the declining enrollment, and then because of that little extra aid, having a budget alignment of one-point-eight million for next year and two-point-four million for twenty-six, twenty-seven, and we get about to the same amounts for the fund balance. Scenario three, uh, the general education aid at three percent, um, and then after staffing adjustments, all again the same, um, a budget alignment of one-point-seven million for next year and two-point-two million. Again, this does not include if things would align, and we got the three hundred thousand in compensatory money. That would help this forecast, all three scenarios. So, cross everything you can and hope that we get that compensatory hold harmless change. Um, and again, the same ending targets, uh, for the fund balance. And so, just graphically, what it looks like, that, um, purplish bar going down is SOD, statutory operating debt, where schools, if their, if their fund balance is a minus two-point-five percent, that's when the state comes in. The reddish is the eight percent fund balance minimum, and then the three blue, yellow, and green are the scenarios one, two, three, where we're kind of at about the same spots for years one and two, and a little bit different in year three. And lastly, I just wanted to, you know, highlight, I go over this with new board members, why maintain a fund balance? Well, you never know what's going to happen. Like, this year, we didn't have the kids show up. We had unexpected things happen with additional transportation routes. Uh, we never know, are we, I have money built in for utility costs, but is it going to be extra cold where, you know, I didn't put, uh, put enough budget in there? You just never know. And when you're at that eight percent, we don't really have a lot of cushion for those unknowns. So, it's, I think, important that we stay as close to eight percent as we can. And then from here, I'm not asking, looking for any approval, we'll use a lot of these scenarios, uh, to have deeper discussions at the budget committee. So, I don't know if there's anything that you want the budget committee to look at in greater detail. What does it look like if we get the three hundred thousand? What are the targets we want to sort for? So, just opening up for questions and discussion.
Per FTE, that would be from the state of Minnesota?
For this year, we, it's on the tables, it's seven thousand two eighty-one that we received this year per ADM. And grades seven through twelve, they're weighted a little higher. We get one-point-two, so twenty percent more on students enrolled seven through twelve.
Any other questions or discussion for Tina?
I was just going to ask on, like, on the utility, that's, uh, paid as use. We can't contract like, or negotiate like a set price or not to exceed dollar amount with the utility company. Do we even have that option?
Correct. No, we are on a plan where, um, for some of our buildings, like, we could get curtailed, where we have to go to a fuel tank. So, we, they could ask us at certain points, you know, to put our heat settings at a certain point, um, like when we don't have kids or at night or whatever, so that we can stay, uh, below a mark. And with, same in the summer with Excel, when it's really hot, you know, shutting lights and AC down as much as we can to help what's going on in the community.
Can you, um, confirm the referendum money that you had on this slide? Is that, that's renewing the ten-year referendum that we've talked about in the past?
Yep. Yep. And like I said, that mainly comes into play in year three. Um, but with the forecast, you know, we just really need to focus on years one and two.
Any other discussion? I know this is a difficult conversation to have because we're looking at a substantial amount of money that's going to have to be right-sized, um, and accounted for to make sure that we stay in a planned budget. But I can tell you that, um, I know Mr. Olson is, Superintendent Olson has done a lot of work on us trying to, um, grow our community, increase our, um, amount of enrollments, which will have an impact, a significant impact on our budgets, um, as well as continuing to be creative and getting as many grants as we possibly can, um, to help make sure that the services to each of our students isn't suffering, um, because of the needs that we have now. So, I know it's, these aren't fun discussions we have to have, but we also have to keep our budget balanced. So, thank you, Tina. All right, and that brings us to, um, our last item. Well, our next school board meeting is February third at five PM. Um, that brings us to adjournment at seven oh four PM.